I would like to call this meeting to order and the first thing I would like to announce is that we are having technical issues. And the video will be posted tomorrow. So if I could have, uh, calling question. Do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need to back up and thank everyone for coming. It's a small audience, it's nice. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Post? Motion carries. Uh, monitoring our North Middle update.
Thank you for having us here today. We were, the last time we were here, we were talking about building, um, the plan for North. And we did not have a principal in at, at that time. So we, at this point, she's bringing up the. Tower of points. We want to show you what has been accomplished at North leading up to the first day of school on Monday. And I want to introduce you to the principal at North, Kevin Fitzstoddle. He's going to go through, um, all the great things that have happened so far.
Maybe.
Maybe. Don't know about that tech tonight. Okay. We're just gonna have to press the down button and not be bullshering.
Alright, so the first thing we have is our new vision for North Middle School. It is, uh, we are North and it's kind of an embodiment. We want guys, we want the students. Uh, we want the staff, we want the, the community to kind of get behind North and kind of embody who we are. And we just want to be North. And there's nurture excellence in every student, opportunities for growth and learning, respect for diversity and community, teamwork and collaboration, and then honor, uh, integrity and all of that. This is something that, uh, we're going to put around the school. Uh, we're going to put it out there on social media. So hopefully we can get people behind us to kind of develop that positivity. The second thing is our transformation specialist is Kristin Tuttle. Uh, she's former superintendent at Worth County Schools. Uh, and she will be there a couple of days a week to meet with us and to discuss different things. Um, she will be primarily, I, I believe, working with instruction. Um, and trying to get into the classrooms, get with us, meet with us, and discuss different things that we could do better to, uh, promote the instruction and better practices. Our, our master schedule. Um, so it's a little different this year. Um, homeroom, seven fifteen to about seven thirty, do we run through the normal schedule? Uh, then we have two lunches. Uh, we have a class from five A and five B. So during that timeframe, we have a forty-five minute lunch and a forty-five minute class. Um, that class is an enrichment class or an intervention class depending on what the students need at that time. So we're trying to put a lot of our kids who, um, are, are on the higher end, um, together so that they can get some enrichment with some of our teachers. And then we're trying to put someone there to kind of that bubble. Uh, that we can pull up into intervention class, uh, where they'll work on iReady, um, and, and focus on some individual lessons within the iReady program, which we'll talk about in a second. Because iReady is a new program for the middle schools and we're kind of the pilot for that for the county. Uh, school improvement team. Uh, so we've met with the state, uh, they've been, uh, they came in and, uh, last month and met with us for about two days. And we developed some good action plans, uh, without, within our workshop. We have a lot of great, uh, staff members involved in it. We have about three or four teachers involved. Uh, we have the, the state representative, Kelly Massonoko, who's been awesome. Uh, she's given a lot of good advice and good action steps to kind of reach some of the things within discipline as well as within instructional. Um, so we're working on those as, as a team. And after we meet with the school improvement team, I meet, I meet with our school leaders and go over some of the same actions so that we can all be on the same page. Alright, so Wevis and discipline training. Uh, today we had the opportunity to bring in pupil services, uh, with Dr. Branch, uh, Lisa Gregory. Yeah, Melissa Holland, all three of them did a great job. We also had equity and inclusion do a separate training at the same time. Um, where Dr. Alfonso and Travis Williams came in and spoke to our staff. And at those, those same times, uh, myself and, uh, Mr. Land, our assistant principal was meeting with the rest of our staff. We were rotating in three different groups. And we had the opportunity, they were going over a lot of good things with the, the discipline process. And we were really focused in our training about just making sure they knew how to put in stuff in Wevis, um, how to access Wevis, what that looks like. Um, and really walk them through that step by step while the other people were meeting about some different things, um, restorative practices, uh, Title IX. And they were really honed in on those things. So we kind of tie all that together and also had an opportunity to bring the board into the school and meet with our, our staff and they were great. So we also had the opportunity today to have in, um, the state representative, uh, for our counselors. And, and she got a chance to meet with our counselors and develop a, a, a school lab program surrounding our counselors with our social workers, our counselors, hope that our system, we can get that situated. Uh, where we have a comprehensive stream counseling plan developed so that we're not, we're all working in the same direction. Um, instead of working in different directions. So we're not, we don't have one person working with the same person in all different tiers. We want, we want to make sure we're using all our services in the correct ways. So they did a great job coming in and developing that.
I didn't know that Ms. Hayes was in the county, but Ms. Hayes actually used to work for me, uh, as one of our lead counselors in Campbell before she went to the Department of Education. So she's a wonderful resource.
Yep, she was awesome. She had, uh, we had a lot of good talks today about some things, uh, that would be very beneficial. Um, iReady is replacing iXL for us. We kind of all said earlier, um, we had that training, so yesterday, sorry, it's been a, it's been a good week, a long week, it's been good. Uh, so, but yesterday we sat in training for iReady. We had the opportunity, uh, for them to kind of go over some of the things with us. Um, and she's going to be coming back and meeting with us to discuss once we can get some data in there and just kind of really divulge it out and get into that. And help our students, uh, develop these real individual, individually based plans to help them progress from the lower ends to the higher ends. Um, and, and really push them to be better. Uh, and then we also have a, a new mentor that's assigned directly to North, Julie Oldfield. Uh, she's been awesome so far. She's developing a lot of good plans. She's planning on getting in every classroom every week, um, not just our new teachers. Um, and, and we've explained that to all of our teachers so they don't feel offended when the name comes in our classroom. Um, trying to help because we want all of our teachers to feel like they're supported. Um, so with her being there on a daily basis, she's going to get out to every classroom every week. And touch base with our teachers and give them some good advice on classroom management, curriculum stuff. And she has a great game plan starting out the year. And I'll be getting ready to head off to my own orientation to see my son. So do you guys have any questions I can answer for you guys about anything?
Um, board members' questions?
I just want to say congratulations on getting, you know, hitting the ground running. I, I, I know that it's, it's hard to. Um, come in, in a situation that hasn't been, you know, the most pleasant the previous few months, but, you know, looking at this presentation, I'm feeling very optimistic. Um, and that there's some good planning and structure that's going to be put in place and, and not just for kids, but also for staff. So kudos to you guys for working so, so hard.
And any other questions or comments?
How was, like, how was staff morale and, like, optimism today or this past?
Yeah, this week has been great. Um, obviously they have a lot of questions because of a lot of changes, uh, but they've been great. Uh, the morale's good. Um, they seem ready and, and excited for the start of the year for students to come in, especially after today, kind of here's some of the disciplines, things that we're trying to keep in place. And, uh, some behavior plans that we're trying to put in place for students and, um, and, and we're also trying to set up some things where, of course, when students come back, uh, they're having some re-entry programs. So like when they get suspended, they come back, we're not just rolling right in the class saying good luck. We're meeting with counselors, we're meeting with people saying, okay, what's, what can we do not to have this happen again? Uh, so we have, we're setting those things up as well. So the processes, um, the processes are coming along, um, but just making sure we're following through with those processes is what will be the next step.
And Dr. Alfonso made a comment today on if he was saying what, why, why were there?
Yeah, when we were there, um, we had three sessions. Uh, we got to see the whole faculty and morale was very high. There was really good energy in the room. And people sound hopeful and they sound like they're looking forward to a good year. I felt good in there. I could feel positive vibes.
Yeah, I've, I've been to North, uh, twice this week. Um, and, um, I can tell both, both times I've been there, I, I have to concur that I was very pleased with. The receptiveness of the staff to, to, um, the expectations that were being set because when I was there, Mr. Fitzstoddle was actually presenting to the staff, um, some of his plans. Um, there were good questions, but, but overall it felt like everybody was in alignment with what needed to occur. And then of course, uh, yesterday I was able to pop into the iReady training. And again, there was a lot of engagement. They were very engaged in making sure they understood the mechanics and the, um, the why behind the, the program. Um, and then of course, as it related to logistics, they're asking really good questions, getting feedback up to how they could, how they could best implement it. So I, 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 I was left both days very, um, uh, optimistic and, uh, appreciative of where the staff is right now and how they really, I mean, how they've come together. So.
That's important. Damon?
Okay, um, let's see. Um, you mentioned that, I think today you did iReady?
Yes.
Training, yes, Jay? So how confident are you that the staff with, with just that day is going to be pretty good at using this as well?
Yeah, I mean, it's going to take some time. It's something they're going to have to get in, work in, navigate through. Um, luckily it, it isn't, and similarities to iXL has similarities. Um, they're not exactly the same, but they have some, like, when you need to redone it, you need to get in there, do the, do the projects, get the plans. Um, so it's just a matter of navigating. And I think once we can get teachers in there and just navigating through real student information and real data, um, it'll be easier. And then, uh, we've, I've already talked to the same lady about coming back and how soon that will be.
And, yeah, there's actually eight days of professional development built into the contract for the, the pilot. So there was the initial training, but then. After each diagnostic assessment, they're going to come back to work with the teachers on analyzing their data and coming up with instructional strategies. To actually, and with the groups of students based upon need, that's part of how, it's going to be embedded professional development. So it's not. The, the, the first one was more of a sit and get, like, here's the overview. The next ones are going to be embedded in, in within their, their, their roles.
That's great.
But there's eight of those days throughout the year.
I was going to ask you how those eight days would be, how we would get that, um, training set up, what I understand.
So I have a couple more quick questions that I gotta leave. Uh, what's the plan for, um, substitutes and many long-term subs to come in, say in October, come in late, uh, to get them sort of up to speed?
Yeah, well, I mean, hopefully we don't have it. Uh, as of right now, we're fully set, so there's not jinxes here. Uh, but, but if we have people coming in, uh, with, having, in the building, it's going to be ideal for her. I mean, she's going to be, uh, we have a couple of her subs already. We've already set up a bird to get in those rooms on a daily basis the first week to make sure we're, we're setting some classroom management examples. We're setting some curriculum instructional examples and just working together. Uh, so, and then also having our assistant principals get in all these rooms to go for them as well as to get in every room every week. Um, and I'm going to try to get into every room every week. Uh, that is the goal is to have the out and about and to make sure we're visible, not only for students, but to be there for staff and support the staff.
Okay. And, um, you mentioned the counselors making a few adjustments to the plan. Can you mention one or two of those adjustments that you?
Well, over the next, over the next year, we're going to start trying to have them be more involved in the scheduling aspect of things, which means they'll meet with students about their future. Like, what's that look like? And what's the scheduling going to look like? Um, as well as we're going to try to transition from doing, uh, you have six and you have seventh and you have eighth and split up between those grades. We're going to try to just do by name. So with those students through their whole middle school. Because once you develop that relationship that first year, and then you say you got to turn over to another, like, that student doesn't want to start over.
Right.
Um, so it's better if they're with the same person. So we're going to be transitioning that as well. That's going to be a little bit slower of a transition, uh, just because we're getting ready to start the year and they've already, everything are ready, uh, as it is. So we're going to try to transition that over the next year.
Okay. And Ms. Oldfield, where, where was she coming from?
Mount Ridge Middle.
Okay. She was an English teacher at Mount Ridge Middle, okay. Thank you.
My assumption is that over the course of this, this year, because of all the new, there's going to be the, the desire to try and solidify this new. As well as learning the new systems, like trying to transfer from iXL to iReady and learning those diagnostics, that this is going to be a little bit of a transition year. And might not necessarily experience, um, what we would ideally like to see if all this had already been put into place. Am I, am I on that same, am I on that same?
I think that's, I think that's very fair. Yes. I think that, um, we're, we are going to see, um, I, I would say we're going to see some incremental, uh, improvements in different areas. Um, there's going to be certain things that I think we're going to see big improvements very quickly. I think there's a quick wins and the long-term wins are going to be, I think, you know, over this transition year period, um, we're going to, I, I think we'll see improvement. But I think we're going to see the big improvement year two, uh, of implementation, year three of implementation.
Do we have any, this is just a thing that popped in my head. Do we have anything like maybe in the staff lounge that, um, you know, visible for, for just the staff? Not necessarily for everybody, but for staff that would be like a stepping stone visibility thing, like we've kind of what you said, you're going to see some quick wins. That they can get, they can see it posted. Those are the quick wins. And that when they have that hard day, because they're going to have a hard day, they can be reminded we had those wins. And we're going to, we're working towards the next one, just like a visibility thing. Is that something that, that you guys have in place or thought about?
Well, we've thought about, like, so there are faculty meetings and there are those faculty meetings, we're going to share out some of the good positive things that are happening, but also some of the things that we need to fix, we need to change. Because we're not naive to think that this is all going to be smooth or perfect.
Right, yeah.
Uh, we know there's going to be, have to be changes made in the middle of the game. And we will do the best we can to make those changes as smoothly as we can. Um, but yeah, like, we, we're going to have faculty meetings, we're going to discuss those things. And we're, I really want to put a spotlight on some of the positive things that are happening, which is. Um, right now I'm, I'm starting to have a lot of control over Facebook. I'm starting to put a lot of things out, just trying to get that positive narrative out early. Um, and just try to push as much as you can.
I don't want to lose that for sight of, you know, some of the things we might experience. So.
Did you, can I ask a question?
I'm done now, you can ask.
Um, I, well, one thing I want to say is Mr. Murphy and I sat in iReady training last year, and I mean, it was with principals, but, but they were so involved in all of that. I, I was so impressed with that. So I can understand that hopefully the staff there is just that way because it's exceptional. But the, the question I have, has Kristen Tuttle started yet in anything?
Tomorrow morning at eight.
Oh, okay. That I'll be interested in.
Yeah, we talked a little bit to be emailed for some different things, but our first official day will be tomorrow.
And, um, I had a teacher this summer of concern from North concerned about, there were only two lunches and there's like, what, six hundred twenty-five kids? How many kids are there?
There's going to be about, right now, it's right now about six twenty.
Yeah. And that would seem like a lot of kids on each lunch. And I, we're concerned that they would get through.
So it's, it's organized a little bit differently than what it looks like on paper. Um, just when you look at it, you see two lunches. Uh, within those two lunches, you have two different sections. So you have one going to recess and it's organized as to which teacher goes where and which kids, which kids get walked where. And then you have some teachers send their kids to lunch. And then while we're in those places, we will rotate them. Um, when we have a rotation schedule set up, we went over that with teachers this week. I think teachers are a little more confident with that after hearing the game plan this week. Um, and not say no, go perfect because it's lunch and it's recess and it's, it's, it's middle school kids. So as we see things, we will adjust if we need to.
Well, another concern I have is, uh, are the cooks going to be able to, you know, get those kids served at times?
Yeah, so, yep, they should have plenty of time. We've talked to our cooks, we've talked to the nutrition of the county. Um, we, and, and we're not the only school doing this. Uh, I know most of the middle school is doing the exact same thing.
Okay.
Um, but it's a forty-five minute lunch recess plan period as opposed to a half an hour. So we're still, we've still got an hour and a half in total for all the kids to eat and get to recess, no different than having an hour for every lunch.
Okay. Any other questions? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much appreciated.
Thank you.
I have a question about, um, Tom forgot, I'm sorry. So this is a good problem, sorry. Is there a real update on Winchester? We did, we, we will absolutely do that, yes. Um, you're going to, you, uh, some of the student did the data regarding Winchester.
Yeah.
And I think you'll probably see some of the things that we're going to be doing at Winchester as it relates to Ms. Burkhardt's, uh, presentation as to how we're supporting some of those schools. But to get an individual update from Winchester, we'll make sure we do one for that as well.
Ms. Burkhardt, uh, the chair's here to support the school with all this.
Yeah. Yes, thank you. Um, good evening Superintendent Sacks, Moses Moore, President Long. Uh, this evening I'm here to present, um, our county plan for improvement and support. Our objectives are this evening to introduce the school improvement and support process that we have been working on through the Department of Teaching and Learning. Um, we're going to define, um, the tier designations. And I do have a packet of information at the end of the presentation. That I will be giving you that gives you the actual school tiers, uh, so you know what schools and which tier, and I'll explain that when we go through. I mean, then we're going to look at the metrics that was used to help determine the tiers. Um, again, when we're looking at this system, we're looking at, um, ways that this department, uh, can help support. Teaching and instruction. So what we did is we looked at three tiers, um, that we're going to be implementing. And we, um, decided what tiers were going to be used based on academic data that we have. Um, and it is different for each programmatic level. We use iXL, we use iReady, we use the, uh, General Summit of Assessment. Um, Mrs. Lopez will be speaking more to that. So tier one are those schools that are actually doing fairly well. Um, they're progressing. And, um, they're on the, on the right trajectory for success. Uh, those are tier one schools. Those schools will receive support from the Department of Teaching and Learning. Um, they will be visited one day a week. Uh, throughout the school year, every day, there will be, uh, individuals from our department doing that. And, um, meeting with the principal, checking in with teachers, asking what kind of support they may need. Uh, we might be asked to do walkthroughs. Uh, we might attend leadership team meetings, data teams. Uh, we might work with individual teachers. Um, the tier one schools have a pretty good, um, solid foundation. And like I said, they are progressing. But we will be supporting them and we want to keep supporting them so they continue to progress. The tier two schools will be getting more interventions from our department. Um, we will be meeting with those schools. Um, and providing interventions and support providers to help continue the growth and challenges that they have. And our tier three schools are those schools who really need that comprehensive, um, identifiable, identifiable support for each school. Where they are and to help teachers with instructional modeling, um, additional resources that we can help through. So overall. Um, we'll be looking at and monitoring the assessments that they may take. Um, we'll be looking at instruction that they are receiving and how we can support that instruction. Excuse me. We'll be giving and collecting feedback for school administrators. We'll be collaborating with those administrators and teachers. And, and trying to, uh, provide more support strategies for teachers so that students are successful. And that, um, students feel supported, staff really feel supported, and that we are also supporting our principals. Uh, we'll also look at outcomes. We want to make sure that our schools are achieving and, um, sustain high performance and growth. Our focus is going to be ELA and math. So those are going to be the teachers that, um, our department will be working with, observing, and, um, helping support instruction. So the tier one schools, they'll receive recognition and support to maintain their high standards and share the practices like they've been doing. Um, supports will be provided as we check-ins one day a week. So when you get your packet, you will see that we have a number of tier one schools and we have individuals that will be checking in with them. So when I say that, we will have, um, a person from the department in a school for one entire day, some more than that. Um, which is really good. I'm excited about that. Our tier two schools, they'll receive targeted support. We want to help them to continue their positive growth. We'll be providing one half day every other week. And when I say that, there will be somebody there every week. But one week it might be someone from the department who is supporting ELA. And the next week would be someone from the department that's supporting math. Those individuals will still be in a building every day, but they'll be servicing two buildings, if that makes sense. Um, so that's the support we'll be providing in tier two. Our tier three schools will be provided one day every week by the department. These are our schools who need, um, the most support. Um, and the most, um, uh, help that we can give them, um, with that. And, um, we are tomorrow actually interviewing for our academic specialist. Um, Dr. Sacks had asked for some approval of different, uh, some employees. And, and that is one that will be a part of our department and they will be in the schools every day. Um, that for, maybe an exception for a T and L meeting for a little bit in the afternoon or a half a day on a Friday. So they will be doing intense, intense work with ELA and math in our K five schools to give that support. So, uh, Mrs. Lopez is going to talk about the metrics and the criteria that we used, um, to come up with the designations. Um, please just keep in mind designations are a place for us to start and provide support for our schools because that's what we want to do. Um, so, Mrs. Lopez.
Good evening. When we, um, looking, um, Mrs. Buckner, Mr. Muller, Ms. Burkhardt and myself met and, and worked through this process. Um, for our K two schools, for our primary schools, uh, we used one metric and that was the iReady benchmark assessment. Now, the, the tool that we actually used, uh, to make the determination was the diagnostic growth report. Which gave you a picture from the beginning of the year to the year two, in terms of their, their performance and their growth. And that data was presented on a quadrant chart. So you could look to see what schools were had high performance, high growth. Um, high performance, low growth, low performance, low growth, and low performance, high growth. So we were able to look at that data for both reading and for math. So with that being said, and in terms of the, a little bit about the tool that we used and the report that we used for iReady. For our tier one schools, the requirement for our tier one schools at the primary level, we wanted to see high performance and high growth, both in reading and in math. For the next, for our tier two, for our primary, uh, schools for tier two, we looked at schools that maybe were, you know, maybe high performing in reading. Or in low performing of, of math, uh, let me rephrase that. Um, for the, let me rephrase that. Tier, uh, two for the primary schools. The criteria there is they had low performance in reading and or math and high performance in another area, in the other content area. This will make more sense when you see it in your packet. So for example, I'm thinking of a school that, that would fall into this, um, designation. For example, Back Creek Valley, they were low performing, high growth in reading and in math. So they were clearly a tier two school. But you will see Hedgesville Elementary was high performing, high growth in reading, but then they were low performing, high growth in math. So that put them into the tier two designation because through our conversation, when we began planning this, what, um, you'll see in the criteria is that if they had a mixed performance. Their designation was based on their lowest category. So, so you will see that one when you get the criteria. Um, for our tier three schools at the primary level, they were in the low performance and low growth. So they were low performing in math and they were also low performing in reading. Any questions about the primaries and their tier designations?
I, I think it's important to point out that as we, as we talk with schools about this, that we didn't want them to feel like these tiered designations were. A label that, um, would make them self-conscious. Uh, that this was not something that we were, you know, spreading throughout the community to say this school is a tier three or what have you. But it was really to designate how we're going to plan to support you and your teachers throughout the school year. So, um, like the example that Ms. Lopez mentioned, you know, a school that is, um, you know, let's say high, high performance, high growth for reading. But is, um, low performance, low growth, or, or high performance, low growth in math. The support that they're going to receive really needs to be sort of tailored toward math. Making sure that those teachers in the primary and intermediate are getting support around math. Now, doesn't mean that if there's an ELA concern that they're not going to be able to help with that. But it's really again to target that support. So I just, I wanted you all to know that we were, we were very intentional in making sure that principals knew, look, you don't, don't let a Tier Three designation or even a Tier Two designation because you, because you're, because you're, let's say you're predominantly a high performing school, you know, get to you too bad. But it should also be maybe a wake-up call that there are certain things that maybe you haven't focusing on we need to make sure we focus on because there could be a little bit of a slide.
Marv, do you want us to ask questions at the end or?
Jackie, whenever you're willing to ask a question, feel free to ask a question.
Why no, we'd like them to ask a question, but I would not want to ask this before I forget. Did principals have PD or a knowledge of what the tiered system is before? When, when were they given some training or or?
This is something that was rolled out to them. I think my dates are starting to run together. I think it was last Monday, Dr. Sacks. I'm sorry.
It was August fifth.
It was August fifth, last Monday. Dr. Sacks gave an overview of the tiered process and the, and the planning behind that. And we have worked together in-house to use the data and to do the metrics and to determine that. And we shared that information with them at that point in time. It was confidential in nature so that each school received their own designation, their own data in terms of how it was determined, in terms of determining their, their tiers. If they chose to share that with, up to them. It was initially introduced last Monday on the fifth. And I think for the most part, it's been positive in terms of the way they've, they've received it and, and with that. And we haven't had a meeting with them since, but we'll have a principals' meeting. And we made sure that once they had their, their information to tell them to reach out, that there was any concerns or any questions. And I did have two or three principals to reach out to have some conversation around their data. And, and so we, we addressed those concerns and had conversation then. So, you know, just an open door policy anytime that they want to talk about it.
I, I just want to be sure that they have a clear understanding of what the tiered system is and how it applies to them.
I think it really is kind of, I think they can definitely align their thinking to this because it's very similar to what we do with our, with our students in the schools. You know, our Tier One is core, you know, the tier one instructor for our students to provide additional support. And with each tier, you get a little bit deeper, a little bit more support. So that's the same idea here. And, and I think Dr. Sacks made a very important point is that it's not to be negative. It's just to provide them the more support that's needed. And so it should really be seen as a positive. It, it's going in and really being able to work with the administrators and collaborate with them. And I know Ms. Burkhardt has set our first date out in about to meet with our schools administrators on August twenty-sixth. And we'll go out and we'll sit down and we'll have some initial conversation. Because even what you will see in your packet, in, in our appendix, we have some ideas in terms of supports that we will offer for Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three. But that does not negate that we will not support what the administrators are saying or what they feel that they're needed. So it will, we will customize based on our conversations with our administrators as we work through this process. So it's not that it's going to be us, going to be, I think it's something, it's going to be us being collaborative and cohesive with the work that we will do together.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? So our, the next metric we're going to look at is for intermediates and middle school. Now, when you get your, your packet, you'll have this broken apart. You'll see the intermediates and then you'll see them in other schools. But for my sake, we have our slides. We combine the information because this is from grades three through eight. And the metrics that we used here are, are similar to grades three through eight. For example, in F S grade level, we all take the West Virginia Journal Summit of Assessment. They all receive a bounce scorecard for accountability. And then at the three, five, we do I Ready. And at six, eight, we do IXL so that we have that formative piece in there. So when we look at this in terms of our metrics, and the metrics were the same for Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three in terms of the I Ready, the General Summit of Assessment and the bounce scorecard for three through five, and IXL, General Summit of Assessment, and the bounce scorecard for six through eight. So when we looked at this in terms of our, our summative assessment, and I will tell you that we relied more on the data from the Summit of Assessment and the bounce scorecard than we did on the Formative Assessment, which would be the I Ready, the IXL. But we were looking at proficiency equal to or higher than the state's proficiency on ELA and or math. And we looked to see on the bounce scorecard for 2023, which the new one has not been posted. So the most recent one we had available to us to use was 2023, was did they meet the annual improvement targets at the following performance level? Partially meet standard or in standard. We looked once again, just like we did for the primary, with the quadrants for I Ready or the, the annual growth for IXL with this. So that in terms of is what classifies a Tier One school. Tier Two, when we look at the Tier Two metrics, once again, the assessments are not changing, but our criteria change slightly. So in terms of Tier Two, we're looking for proficiency within two percentage points of the state. They might, they were almost there, but just not quite. Or they could be equal to or higher than the state's proficiency at least, at least one content area. And they met their annual incremental targets at the partially meet standard level on the 2023 bounce scorecard of either ELA or math. And for Tier Three, once again, metrics are the same. But these are the schools that were performing below the state's proficiency in reading and math and scored at the does not meet performance level and that does not meet the annual improvement targets on the bounce scorecard. So that is then the metrics that we use for grades three through eight. Any questions? High school, for our high schools, our high schools do take IXL, nine through eleven grade. We look at their college board and I put the college board symbol here, but really it's really, it's, it is the West Virginia Journal Summit of Assessment for S A P School Day, but that's the platform of the college board. And then we have the bounce scorecard as well. So our high schools, when we're looking at their data, looking at their average score. Is their average score for reading and writing and math equal to or higher than the state's average score? And then we also looked at their benchmark scores, you know, in terms of reading and writing and math. Like are they equal to or higher in terms of the set of students that were meeting the benchmarks in reading, writing, and or math? And once again, we looked at the IXL in terms of, of that annual, annual growth for them. But it really did not drive or wait, drive or the metrics here. And then we also used the bounce scorecard. And when we looked at the bounce scorecard for them, because they have several components in terms of the success criteria on the bounce scorecard, we looked at their academic achievement and were they meeting their annual target improvement target for academic achievement of reading and math, on track to graduate and or the post-secondary. So we gave some additional metrics that we looked at on the bounce scorecard for the high school. For Tier Two, once again, the S A P School Day means for average score for reading, writing, math equal to or higher than the state's at least one content area. And then once again, you know, how are they performing in terms of where were they at in terms of the benchmark and meeting benchmark in at least one content area? And the metrics for the scorecard remain the same. At this point in time, we were looking at that partially meets just here on Tier Two. Tier Three, this, this, their scores were for reading and math were below the state. They were below the state in terms of. They were below the state in terms of meeting the benchmarks. And then once again, we looked at the, the three criterias on the bounce scorecard for, for them as well.
My computer does not light up today.
It is not a fan today. Usually I struggle with the remote, as you all know. I don't know what happened to your title. It's okay. Thank you. And then, and so then when you look in terms of some of the additional information, which I, I thought at the beginning is that when we were looking at consideration and we've already addressed this, you know, if it was a mixed performance, we went with the lower score based on the designation because we felt like it was the slower. And, and to be there. And, and the same way for the, for the high schools as, as well. So that is sort of just a really quick, big picture overview, high level overview in terms of what we did, in terms of our thinking as to determine the supports for the school. And as I said, when you get your packet, you'll see, and they're, they're labeled by the criteria that you can take some time and study and look more in depth through in terms of the way I presented it tonight. It's more in depth. You'll see then the schools that are by tier. When you look through them, they're not alphabetical. When I get Tier One, you're going to see the primary schools, then the intermediate, then the middle, the high schools. They're not alphabetically faster than the way they're designed in each tier for Tier Two and Tier Three. And then I think at the end of this very first criteria packet, it's where you'll see some of our brainstorming ideas in terms of supports that we can provide to the schools to just give them an idea in terms of what you can come in and, and do for that. Any final questions?
So let me just say, this is a work in progress. We have created, scheduled, and we haven't shared that with the principal yet. And it is probably going to be modified because we want to meet their needs and be at that school in the day that is best for them. So that would be a conversation that we have. And we'll be talking about this at our instructional meetings as well and improving upon anything we can to help support them. So I'm sure there's going to be some tweaks, but this is, this is how we're going to get started. So I do want to share a packet with you. On the front page, I have just given you a little bit of overview of what we've decided as far as scheduling or who will be doing this, certain schools from our department. Dr. Sacks, I think I gave you one.
You did.
Thanks, Jane.
You're welcome. And that may change also. We lucked out in our department because we do have a lot of individuals who K five, of course, ELA and math, they're certified to do. But secondary, we had individuals who taught ELA and math. So we can provide that support as well. So I'm pretty pleased about that. So if you look at each tab, the first tab is the criteria. And that's what Mrs. Lopez went over. You'll see each school's designation. You have to read down to it. But you can tell what level it is and it basically says what tier that school is in. And we have that separated for you by tiers.
Did you, did you have to have a, a list of schools, tier, like Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three? You just have a general list of that? You gave it to me. You gave it to me and I looked at it and I didn't even think about that.
That's okay. That's okay. We can get that for you. It's not a problem.
Yeah, we'll just email it to them so they have it, so that that way it's condensed, but.
And then also too, as you're looking through it and studying the data and reviewing the data, if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to follow or schedule appointments coming in so that we can maybe talk in more detail if you have questions.
I was just curious if North and Winchester Avenue are in the tiered system.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
They're Tier Three now.
Yeah, I would expect them to be, but I didn't know how that worked with.
Actually, something else we did, we didn't want to pull a lot of classroom teachers out for the new positions this year that were approved. So we did find some individuals who are retired that are going to come and help us with that. Steve Dellinger is actually going to be working with Winchester Avenue. And Bobby Evinger, who is a retired teacher, she taught intermediate and middle school will be helping support the intermediates. They will be in the school. Bobby's going to work two days a week and Steve's going to work one day a week. So we're going to, we're going to get support for them as well. Yes, absolutely. And Turney Potten is at North anyway. So he's going to be providing that support at North.
Okay, I'm just curious how that fit in with.
Yes, absolutely.
Plan and.
And you will also see that South and North Virginia, as well, because they were.
Every school is getting some kind of support. Absolutely. And like I said, it could change. We find we need to move individuals around to help the school more than maybe another school doesn't need that help or one needs more math. We're going to be flexible with this. I think it's going to be fluid. And working with these principals will work out what's best for those schools and their teachers.
Great. Other questions?
I have a question. Mentioned that Tier One, well, on the on the slide, so the three check-ins one day a week. But then when you were speaking, you said it's going to be over a period of time once a day?
So we have, I believe, six Tier One schools. So one person would go to that school, six schools, in one day. Does that make sense? Okay, so it's a check-in. You know, they might say, do you, you know, what can I help you with today? Do you need me to observe a teacher? So they're not going to get as much time and detailed support. Now, we find that they need it throughout the process. That's when, you know, we'll work through that and provide them that support. But starting out, that's what that means. Because they needed the least amount of support based on how their data showed in that situation.
Great. Anybody else? Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Dr. Unfalter. Will be updating us on our, our story, our restorative practices.
If you go over to, what happens if you hit present? On the right. To the right, to the right, to the right, a little bit more, a little bit more, a little bit more, right there.
That's giving us that left screen.
Hey, what if you download, what if you open it like?
Are you saying download it?
Yeah, like.
We don't have.
We'll get back to Lee about that.
Good evening, President Wong, members of the board, Superintendent Sacks. I'm here to present the restorative approach, approach to ISS. And I wanted to give you some history of how this came to be in the Department of Equity. So when I first started, my start date was August two thousand twenty-two. And in July, July twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two, an article came out in the Mountain State Spotlight that black students in West Virginia are suspended twice as often as their white peers. Community leaders aren't convinced, yet another report is the answer. So I printed that out with you and take a look at that. And I began to do some research in our own county. And I learned, I, I compared this to Canola, Cabell, Raleigh, and Montague County. And I found that on the secondary level and primary level, we did not fall into the red in our minority subgroups as far as suspensions go. However, when looking at the numbers, there is discrepancy. And so I started to research restorative practices. And restorative practices, at the heart of it, is about community building and relationship building, which requires communication. Then I started to learn about articles on how restorative practices are a preventative measure to school violence because it allows students the opportunity to be heard and to explain the context of what they're going through and helps the adult learn what's actually needed to help support them. So then I started working specifically with our middle schools in school suspension rooms. And I purchased a program that we already use through Vector Solutions. It's our Save Schools Training. Well, Vector Solutions has A through twelve student videos. And I trained each individual school in school suspension aid on those videos and showed them how to use it and met with the principals and each principal. And showed them how to use it and met with the principals, and each principal and in-school suspension aide was on board. Um, I found that there were some obstacles, three out of the six schools actually used it regularly. And to me, that was just a mismanagement of resources, so I did not continue with that program. We, at the same time, were training our school counselors and social workers and equity and inclusion liaisons on the concept of restorative practices. And they learned skills like empathetic listening, community building, restorative conversations, circles, talking circles, peace circles. And these are things that they use to increase their capacity to meet students, so they can talk about chronic absences. Or, or decision-making, good decision-making. And so we built a team, including the Equity and Inclusion Liaison, the School Counselor, the Social Worker. The In-School Suspension Aid and the Principal. And they are, they actually have been given, the school principals have been given an overview of the restorative approach to ISS. And during that time, the principals recognized that there are existing challenges in ISS. And that includes students following directions, a lack of work being sent to students, a lack of structure. In-school suspension aides reported that they don't know who's in the room before they get to work that day. Just some structural and communication aspects, keeping the students on task, devices, I gave you, I gave you some of that information. After they were presented with what the restorative approach is, they shared collectively that, yes, they're satisfied. With the opportunity for more information on a restorative approach, approach to ISS. And how the content was relevant to their roles and how likely they are to apply it. So we actually had a training yesterday at Blue Ridge with twelve schools represented.
Are you going through this, by the way?
Oh, sorry.
I'm just trying to figure where you're at. You're doing a great job, and I'm thinking, are we still on the first slide? Are we further down? I was like, well, she's talking a lot on that first slide, I'm thinking.
Yeah, all the way back to restorative justice.
I was gonna say, there's a lot of information in between this and my team, other than I don't want her to skip over.
Let me just go back to the basics.
I'm sorry.
Get you that yesterday.
Well, I, I've been shuffling through this, trying to figure out what I missed, and.
Nothing, I will go over it. I'll, I'll be slow.
Oh, I know.
Okay, so restorative justice is a mindset. It's not just a set of tangible things that you can give to someone to apply. And at the heart of that mindset are relationships and community life. So when you focus on relationships, you're invested in creating and maintaining a strong community by building relationships proactively. And repairing relationships when harm occurs, and harm occurs throughout the day in schools, throughout all the schools. And that could be as simple as the student disrespecting or disrupting the teacher's lesson. And when a teacher responds to that disrespect or disruption, depending on how they respond, if there's no relationship built, it can create harm. So we've been teaching staff that community-building activities and checking in with students are really good ways to. Get their finger on the pulse of what their students are coming with that day. It also kind of follows along with Policy twenty-five, ten, seven, four, one point I, which is about culturally responsive teaching. Our, our teachers need to know who's in their classrooms and how to communicate with them well. So we, we've been teaching them. Strategies on how to do that, that are restorative practices. So let me continue with my presentation. Hurt people hurt people, you've probably heard that quote before. When another person makes you suffer, it's because he suffers deeply within himself, and his suffering is spilling over. He does not need punishment, he needs help. That's the message he's sending, behavior is communication, and we recognize that there are people that cause harm, and there are people who receive harm, and they're both people, and they both have needs. And we believe that the in-school suspension environment is still a learning environment where they can learn how to. Take accountability for the harm that was caused, learn who was impacted by that harm, and how to move forward. Oftentimes, when we offer punitive punishments, it's a punishment that's given to them. And oftentimes, they need us to help them through it, that's the restorative piece, is that relationship.
I, I want you to repeat that. I want you to repeat that, because that is crucial.
Oftentimes, a punitive punishment is something that happens to students. And usually, it's a behavior or a skill deficit that they need help from us to work through it. And.
It's not that we're withholding a consequence, a natural consequence, correct? I just want to make sure everybody is hearing that, because some people will, will start seeing some of the. Words previous to this slide or previous to, to this part of the conversation. And their hackles will get up, and they will immediately start putting walls up, so I just want to make sure everybody is understanding. Restorative justice does not look like withholding consequences is talking about working with the student through those consequences, so it's not to do that again.
Correct.
Hoping that it won't happen again.
It's definitely not, and I, and I hear, and I hear exactly what you're saying, because it's not about making excuses for the.
Correct, correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we definitely believe in Policy forty-three, seventy-three, we believe in traditional consequences. Just take, for example, let's say, for example, you give a student three days of out-of-school suspension, they're out of school, and now they're back in school. How can we tell if we didn't speak with them, whether they learned from that consequence? It's a punitive consequence that happened to them, and they're coming back without instruction. So I believe that in OSS reentry, so maybe you would give two days out-of-school suspension and one day in-school as a reentry. So that they can have a dialogue with the person in the in-school suspension room about the behavior that was done. Before they re-enter back into the general education population.
My issue with there is that we have a handful of in-school suspension classrooms. We don't have in-school suspension in every school.
We have in-school suspension in twelve schools, and that's what we're focusing on this year.
Well, that's always been a push from me.
I was gonna say, and, and I think.
More in school.
More in school.
Yeah, yeah, I think, and we don't have to send kids home because they want to be sent home. Especially if we're seeing that this practice that, that you guys are, I'm assuming, rolling out and really supporting and implementing. You know, there's going to likely be some statistics that come from this that will help support that idea for, oh, I love it.
I kind of have some. Spring Mills High School is one of our schools in the district that already practices restorative practices. They have a program called the Nest Program, which is an emotional, social emotional learning program, they have a reset program. And I don't know, I maybe sent that information to Jess too late, but I'll just give you.
I think it's the last page of your packet.
Okay.
I think it's last page, yeah.
So out of a hundred thirty-five behaviors that were, were committed last school year. So it says, one hundred thirty-five students were assigned to Spring Mills High Nest sessions for tier-one behavior intervention. And all students engaged in a restorative circle and reflection activity, and of these students, forty-one were repeat participants. So that's, that's more than fifty percent did not repeat, they were not repeat offenders. And that, that's for their Nest program, which involve restorative circles, which is basically a conversation. Where we're sitting in a circle, there aren't any obstacles between us, the hierarchy is gone. We can see that we're being transparent and vulnerable with each other. There's a talking piece, we honor the talking piece, there's a whole process, there's a centerpiece, so if students get uncomfortable looking at each other, they can look to the centerpiece and stay grounded. We can have our norms and our agreements about how we talk in this talking circle, there can be like fidgets in case they get nervous. And the talking circle has rounds. The person with this talking piece can talk as long as they need to, as little as they need to, or they can pass in general. This is supposed to be a safe space where students have a sense of belonging, they're not shamed. Where they can have an open dialogue and learn. So there would be a round of questions, like maybe that in-school suspension aide would ask, what did you do to get in here today? And so the students can start sharing, how do you feel about being in here today, would might be the second round? And then we might say, who was impacted by what you did today? Oftentimes, I think when students engage in some of the behaviors, they don't realize in the moment. How their behavior has impacted the community, the school is a community, and they, and they had caused harm in that community. So how have they impacted it, and how can they go back into the community and restore that harm?
Can I ask a question? How, I can see how Spring Mills can incorporate that in their curriculum, and middle schools, because they could put that maybe in their Unified Arts, or they call it something different now. Rotations, but how do you incorporate that into K through five or?
So I thought about this, and you know, our acronyms, they're already punitive, in-school suspension, I was thinking, you know, people could change that acronym really to in-school support. Lunch detention, I was thinking discovery and reflection, after-school detention, after-school discovery and reflection. Sometimes schools have before-school detention, they really just need time and space to understand and be heard, and to be given support.
Well, my question again is, I get, I get that, but when you're doing in, before-school and after-school, you're going to have one person there. Probably with one student, and are they going to do this? Restorative practices that, say, it's a, maybe it's an hour forty-five minutes, I don't know how long it is, with that one student. My, my question was, how do we incorporate this in the curriculum?
Well, I think a lot of times this is occurring in the in-school suspension room. So if, if they have, if they have the structure in place already, that's when it happens. So if, for our primary and intermediate schools that don't. It's less likely that this is going to be something that they're going to be able to implement as much, I mean, obviously, some of the practices they can, but it's probably going to be with the counselor. At the school, or the principal, when they're doing lunch detention, or whatever it may be.
One of the things, though, that can be, that, that I know when I was working in the public schools, that we did was after an event, and they went through some of these. Types of conversations afterwards, we try to utilize, because then they start to learn it, and they're hearing it, and then as they're going through. Let's say, you know, Johnny threw a chair at Sally, Sally got hurt, he's now in ISS. The next time he goes to grab a chair.
He should be suspended, though.
I. I understand, I, well, my example for Washington County schools, it didn't happen that way, but that's beside the point. Um, so for, for the sake of the conversation for right now, the moment that that student starts to escalate is going to be that moment when, when the teachers are, are seeing it, hearing it, and they're going to know what those triggers are. Because they've already seen it once, but at the same time, they can also pull in some of these strategies to help de-escalate at the same time. And potentially pull in the other supports within the school system, you know, the principal, the counselors, to have those conversations, and maybe even if it's because somebody said something to them that they didn't like. Pulling those two out of the classroom and having some of those conversations in, you know, in the hallway or in a counseling office. So there's are ways that they incorporate it in after they've been in ISS, but, I mean, those are just. Correct me if I'm wrong, at any point in time, but there's are ways we did it when we were, when I was in school, and, and, you know, in the classroom.
Well, I think, I think you were special needs, so.
I was, I was.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
And we, I know Jess knows this, we have, not that Jess, that, that's Dr. Jess. We have two in schools and the intermediate, so that's very helpful, but until we get more.
Yeah, I think you're, and you're exactly right, it's all, it's all, it's definitely all about learning how to de-escalate behaviors, especially if you have. Students or children that you know escalate very easily, or, or what those triggers are.
Yes, and if you take a look here at this slide, it talks about tiers of support. So the universal support, as far as restorative practices go, are just building community. And having teachers know who their students are, what, what the demographic of their student makeup is, the home lines that their students come from. Their strengths, not just academic strengths, but character strengths, whether they're athletic, or artistic, or musically talented, just. Having a positive rapport with their student. And when a student feels harmed or has caused harm, that student is comfortable enough to speak with their teacher. And the teacher has a script, and you have been given that too, that's the restorative conversation packet, they can just simply ask, what happened? Not, what did you do now? Because again, what, the way that the educator responds can cause more harm. Second question is, what were you thinking at the time? Not, what were you thinking? Because that could insinuate you weren't thinking, and that's disrespectful to the student. And so the student may cause more harm if they feel like they're being undervalued in that space in front of their peers. Teachers can definitely prevent an escalated situation just by having a positive rapport and relationship with the student. Then the third question would be, how did this impact, who else did this impact? This gives the student an opportunity to share how it did impact other people, because when a behavior is being done. In the moment, in the heat of the moment, they're not thinking about how other people are impacted, that's usually the adult who's like. You're disrupting my class and my lesson, and this is the fourth time it's happened today, and. So anyway, and then the fourth question would be, how can we help you? What do we need to do to help fix this problem? So that the student doesn't feel alone or isolated in fixing the problem, it could be a skill deficit. This morning, when I was at North, Ms. Cleffner told me that. When students were sent to the office and they were escalated, she gave them a reflection sheet so that they could kind of calm down and reflect in the moment. So our teachers today were given those four questions, and we asked them, let's say, for example, you have a student coming in off the bus, something happened. They have their hood on, they're just completely disrespectful, and it's going to impact the community of the classroom. Give them the reflection sheet, let them know, hey, listen, I care about what's going on right now, you know that I have a classroom. Please fill this out, and I'll get back to you. The student needs to know that the teacher cares. And that they can be, that they can make mistakes in front of their teacher without being shamed or shunned. Because that space needs to be a safe space for belonging, they need to feel as if they belong. That's actually one key way that students engage is feeling belonging and connectedness in the classroom. Okay, so going to tier two is when we're repairing the harm, so therefore, like a talking circle might happen with the counselor.
Jess, what, are we still?
Yeah, we're still on the tiers. And then restorative conversation, and then if there's a serious harm done, and it's peer-to-peer conflict. And we want to help mediate that, and we can have a peace circle, Mr. Williams and I are trained on doing peace circles. That's something that we offer staff as well. All right, so. We're on page six now.
Okay, are we going to go through this entire booklet?
Well, I don't know, I was just talking, and then I slowed down.
I'd say there's, there's lots of pages.
Yeah, I would say there's lots, but do you think maybe, I mean, I, I don't know, I don't know how, I don't know how much more you have, it's all very good, it's very, and I think it's extremely important. But do you think you could try to keep it around fifteen more minutes?
Yeah.
Okay, is that all right?
I touched off, but I didn't want.
Because there could be an hour here.
Just one is back.
Is that okay, Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Three hours.
So this is the actual presentation, but what you have are resources, that's not really a part of the presentation.
Okay, good.
So the, so the resource. So the, so the resources are how to conduct a restorative conversation, that's one of the resources. It's basically a script. And it's something that can be replicated and um systematic. Then you have empathetic listening, it teaches uh when you're having that restorative conversation. Um, not to interrupt the student, cause oftentimes, um, you know, we might get impatient and we'd be like, um. You shouldn't have done that, this is what you should have done. If you just thought about, you know, we need to give the student an opportunity to ta-talk through what happened without interrupting them. Um, so that's why the empathetic listening packet is in there. And then you have a community building packet, which teaches what a peace circle is, or a community circle, or a talking circle, the process. Um, how to set one up, what the norms and values are of those circles. So those are the additional uh attachments that you have, that is, that's not necessarily the uh. Presentation, and then I gave you some data from New Root, New Roots who's teaching us about restorative practices and. Um, it just tells you some of the social emotional learning um that comes with it. So it teaches students how to understand and manage emotions. Um, helps students set and achieve goals, builds and maintains healthy relationships. It encourages positive decision-making. Um, and then you can see some of the statistics from implementing restorative practices in the building. Uh, twenty-nine percent decrease in bullying behaviors and violence. Um, I thought that was way.
Hey, hey, uh, Dr. Alfonso, as it relates to New Root, um, can you explain to the board? Um, it's a new program and how we invited schools to participate and the receptiveness of the schools to participate in. Implementing New Root for the year ahead.
Well, New Root previously was working with us with our all thirty-two schools, with our school counselors. And our social workers and our equity and inclusion liaisons. And they've already tr- uh trained them on these concepts. We wanted that to be sustainable. And so we thought, what better way to do that in the in-school suspension rounds? Where students need to have an opportunity to be heard. Cause sometimes students sit in there with work and we can make that space more structured and productive. Where they can learn um how to reflect and um fix that behavior. So New Root is out of Chicago, they work with Chicago Public Schools. Um, and other schools across the nation, they've been working with us for a full year. And we thought this year, since the instructional in-in-school suspension aid is an aid. We have professionals who are trained in this. So we created a team of administrators, school counselors, and social workers. Who can help sustain the work in these buildings by empowering and encouraging the in. Um, in-school suspension aid to continue these practices in that space. And on September uh fourth, New Root will be coming back to Martinsburg to give our school leaders an overview of restorative. Practices so that we have a universal language in the county. We've already been doing that, we kind of gave them some information on August fifth, when they came back to their general principals meeting. And then after the, or on September sixteenth, New Root will be um revisiting virtually. The instructional, or sorry, the in-school suspension aides and coaching them. And there'll be another coaching session on October fourteenth. So um, all schools have been trained in restorative practices, there are their staff from each building. Twelve schools moving forward with in-school suspension are getting a more intense um training and professional development with New Root.
But that was something that those schools opted to do.
They did opt to do that.
We did give them the option to participate or not, and it was overwhelming that they all wanted to.
We met on August first, that's when um I offered, I gave, that's where this data comes from, this is their feedback. Saying, yes, we have collectively experienced similar challenges in in-school suspension, and yes, we want this. Um, and then, so the evidence of them wanting that is yesterday, they showed up at our training. They were trained on these practices. Where they learned about how to structure the room, how to create an agenda, um how to have a calming um location. Have a, I have a space where um they can maybe have a go-on, like a restorative conversation with students. Um, so I can't, you don't have this because this was given to us yesterday. But this was the actual um participation packet that our in-school suspension aid. Counselors and social workers and some of our administrators got yesterday. On how to facilitate an in-school suspension room with a restorative approach. And they really liked it, they actually are very excited, I'm excited, I, I'm really excited about it.
I could tell.
Yeah. Kids are getting a good opportunity to be heard and to learn from their mistakes.
I haven't seen you this animated before.
Being honest, you know, it's um. But it was when I got the job.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness, I didn't, I never, I never realized that. Well, what I can tell you is that Dr. Alfonso is very passionate about making sure that. Um, we're not, we're not doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results.
Yeah.
And I think with our in-school suspension, and I honestly, you know, I think that this is also something that. Um, you know, as we think about the challenges that we have in meeting all of our students' needs, is that that. Do children come from different backgrounds, different family experiences.
Dynamic.
And so we have to be able to identify what the, the root causes of the behaviors are. And and then, and again, help them, not make excuses for them, but work through how to not be repeaters. And I think that that's really the root of what we're trying to accomplish, and it's holistic, and so it's, it's holistic, it's school, it's almost school-wide. Because, again, we're engaging administrators, counselors, social workers, and now those in-school suspension support staff to to try to.
Yeah.
Um, impact positive change for their students. But also, there's gonna be a direct, hopefully a direct correlation between the positive impact for their students and those students staying in classrooms. Learning, is that what they're gonna learn, and then impacting school improvement as well.
It's just too bad that we don't have more time in the school day to incorporate more of what this needs to. And or if we had in-school suspension groups in every school.
Did a great job in getting them in.
Have, have we thought about expanding this to our um alternative school?
I haven't spoken to Mr. Marquette about that.
Maybe that's something for us to think about, because it's a, an evening program where maybe they can, part, that's part of the, that's part of the programming for those students.
I'd love to see, and I have no idea, this is just the thought that goes through my head, but and I have no idea how this would be implemented or rolled out. But I'd love to see the ability for um Dr. Alfonso, especially to be able to have conversations with our parental community. So they are understanding what is being done, because they think that there's so many misconceptions out there. Um, there, there are, there are things that that I think are valuable, it's, it's one of those things I was talking with Dr. Sacks yesterday. There's, I, I don't wanna throw the baby out with the bathwater concept of, I don't want, I think we do need to do. The consequences piece that we've, we, we have talked about, and I think some area, areas of our country have, have. Gotten rid of that piece. Um, but this actually does something different than just throwing that out. Taking that consequence and putting it to it, putting, putting this in motion so that they're understanding, they're aware. Our kids are dealing with so many things that we didn't have to deal with twenty, thirty years ago. I mean, I'm just thinking about my own kids that are in high school, early adulthood, and they didn't have, we, we did not have cell drugs. We didn't have the, the narcotic epidemic that we have now, we just, we just didn't have that. So um, was narcotics shared, but.
We had it here.
Well, not, well, okay. Not to, not to, I'll say as much, where I was at, it was not.
Yeah.
It was not to the level that it is now. Meaning, we didn't have kids coming to school, having just watched their mom or dad overdose the night before. There might have been drug use, but there wasn't like it, it's, it's just, it's different. If it's still there.
Same here in Martinsburg, I mean, we had Reader's Digest come because it was so bad here.
Okay, well, there's, there's history that I won't know, I mean, our kids are, our kids are dealing with it. So we've, we've, we've gotta be able to have these conversations and and talk about new ways of dealing with some of this, cause the old doesn't fit with the new.
Thanks, Dr. Alfonso.
I just didn't comment, I didn't ask any questions, did you have questions?
Your comments took his, their questions.
For folks listening, either parents or teachers, um, for faculty, like, how can they like access this information, the resources?
Um, it's a good question, I haven't made it accessible to.
Beyond the people that have had training?
Yes.
Yeah, well, maybe what we could think about doing is for, um, I, I mean, I think it might be good for us to put some informational items together. Like what Ms. Powers was suggesting, for the community to know a little bit more about the initiative. And that can help with part of Mr. Martin's question, but I think also perhaps thinking about how in our professional development plan for the year. If others are interested in learning more about it, having maybe a session.
Mm-hmm.
Where we offer a, an after-school session or something like that for people to learn more about it. Um, and then that may also help, I would also encourage folks that as they get the opportunity to provide feedback to this school. Or uh stakeholder survey, that they mention those things, that what they would like to have more professional development around. Um, and that will help drive our professional development for all staff as well, but. But definitely coming up a plan for more people to be exposed to it, so that it's more school, you know, school-wide ownership is being important.
Well, and and as um the schools get more um. Used to the program and get more, it's more embedded in what they're. It, it will become easier for them to, parents to reach out to the school easier than trying to figure out who do they go to.
This is the first time you had a presentation, so.
Yes.
I'm thinking.
I'm like overly zealous.
And this is a, a con, again, sometimes it's like, um, like parents are like. How like, how can we get more resources and like, on the website, there's not much.
Yeah.
So it's like, like more like community, like community.
Yeah.
So we actually are partnering with the Cook Center, and that is a parent resource. We're going to have the Cook Center Medallion on our websites here pretty soon. But it offers parent coaching free and parent videos addressing certain topics. That they just watch that helps their child.
Good.
So they'll be able to access that, or tell them how to get that information, it'll be on our website.
And our administrators are being trained on that on September sixth. So the medallion should be coming up on our websites close to then, and you can add more information on Superintendent's Friday Letter about it. Because we just trained our social workers on it yesterday.
Awesome.
Yeah.
It's a good program.
Yeah. I'm excited. I'm excited, we also have another program called Move This World. Which is a social emotional learning program that can be used, like in the event that a teacher needs to stop instruction for a moment and just regroup. Um, there are reading exercises, reflection exercises, opportunities for the students to be introspective. There are even handouts, like reflection sheets. And um, it's a pre-K to twelve curriculum, and there are videos that just simply need to be played. There's not like extra work or a lesson planned, and the videos are prevented, presented by students their age. It looks like their peers um doing these exercises with them. So I'm excited about these resources. Okay.
Um, based on how you, you started it and and this handout here, um, you had mentioned that the uh, this one rate for minority students and about making connections. Uh, do you feel it would help if we were able to hire more educators of color and, and or do you see a need for more implicit bias training?
Yeah, we would definitely benefit from hiring educators of color. Of course, we wanna see the representation in the classrooms match the student population, and I think we've been working really hard to do that. I know that we, we've hired abroad actually this year, I wanna say at least a half dozen employees have come. Um, I know like two Filipino employees. Um, and um, which, I'm Filipino, so that means, that's, that's meaningful to me. And then when I went to the new um teacher orientation and presented, that was a very diverse group. Um, and I was really pleased to see that. Yes, that's important, and then yes, there, there is importance to train on bias. And um, have us see our own biases and um, actually, we're getting an opportunity through Dr. Sacks' goals. To do an achievement scorecard where we can learn where there are deficits in that capacity. And then best practices on how to address those.
And I also like to add, Mr. Wright, that I think that you're, you're exactly, one of the things I, I learned. You know, a lot of times we can be ignorant to the issues, uh, if we're not faced with them. And so one of the things I learned over the last seven years is, is that. Um, unconscious bias is something that I think affects um a lot of schools. And and really communities, is that we don't, we don't mean to offend, but we can come across as offensive if we are. If we have an unconscious bias of a culture or, you know, um, uh. Culture, religion, race, whatever that may be, and we need to be more cognizant of what those things are. So that we're not coming across as disrespectful. And so, um, I think, I think, um, you, you, you called it something a little bit different, I, I, I'm saying unconscious bias. Implicit bias, yeah, I think that that is absolutely something that we need to focus on. Um, I think that that is something that we need to have as part of our um new employee onboarding. I think it needs to be something that we have for our coaches, uh, for um employees within the school district. So I think, I do think that that's very important, I think, and the other thing is, is I attended the um NAACP meeting last night. And the, the same question sort of came up, and I, I talked about that I think, as Ms., as Dr. Alfonso just mentioned. Is that I do think it's very important that our employee um demographics match the demographics of our students. Um, students that, students need to see people like them that are in successful roles and as role models. Uh, because, let's just face it, not everybody has a positive role model at home, it doesn't matter what color you are or what your socioeconomic status is. You may be coming from a household where you just don't see someone as being successful, and we wanna make sure that, 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 that our children are exposed to that. And I think part of that, especially when we think about um employees of color, is that while we cannot. Hire specifically someone based upon their skin color or their demographic. Um, we, we can definitely do a better job of making sure that we are attracting qualified individuals um from diverse communities. And so I think that that's gonna be something that, um, as you look at, uh, uh, hiring, retaining high-quality staff. Is gonna be something that, that I'm going to have to make sure we're focusing on as well as where are we recruiting from in order to attract. People of color um to apply for and to be the most qualified person in a, in a job.
Well, actually, the, it's, it's actually more important for the majority than it is for the minority.
Mm-hmm.
Because that minority is, um, it's very easy for me to, to uh walk in the majority's world.
Mm-hmm.
But it's the opposite, very, very rarely happens. In our churches and our communities, whatever, if the majority population of students see minority population in positions of power. Positions of authority, it changes their perspective.
Sure.
Because as historically, as a nation, we have not, we have uh downgraded the impact of the minority population. In almost every category in our society. So seeing, com-combatting that and seeing somebody that is successful in those positions. Will have a big impact on knocking down those stereotypes.
Yeah.
I don't think that.
Go ahead.
I, I don't think that's just uh regarding color, I think that's. Many, many things, uh, social, economic, uh, background, uh, many things. Gender, uh, I, I just don't think we can say.
Well, it's just harder to see, uh, uh, gender is easy to see, but I'm gonna say, in terms of somebody coming from, from party, you don't really see that.
Uh, you see it more than me.
No, no, what I mean is, I would never know, like, if you say you were the new superintendent, I would never know that you brought up in your, your family income was twenty thousand dollars. Yeah, I would not know that unless I read your bio, but I can see you and I can see you're a female.
Mm-hmm.
And I can see other physical characteristics, a bunch of, that's what I'm saying, and so it's, now you could tell them, and students are like, wow, you know, once you tell them. But just looking at you, the females in the room and event are like, whoa, this woman is like really outstanding and blah, blah, blah. And then they stop looking at women as, oh, they don't belong in this position, women, they can look at women and say, women can lead and women are, can be successful. That's.
Yeah, I think when we start being able. Yeah. I think when we start being able to have, um, and I'm not saying that this conversation qualifies for what I'm going to say by in stretch. Um, but when we can start having conversations that don't apply victimhood to one group of individuals over another group of individuals and start encouraging each other to succeed, we're actually gonna change the narrative. Um, continuing to see one group, whether it's socioeconomic, race, gender, uh whatever that is, whether you grew up in an urban area versus a rural area, whatever that is, if we stop addressing each other as if we're victims and we start talking to each other like we have the ability to, to do things that we might not normally think that we could do and start understanding that and empowering each other, we're just not gonna change that narrative. I think we just have to flip the script. It's one thing to understand our history, but it's another thing to empower someone with the understanding that they can do anything they really want to do and showing them that there are different avenues to get there. That's my, that's my elevator speech on that.
Which I think all this ties back to historic. First, I wanna address, we did provide a respect-based interventions and informed practices for our principals on July tenth, which discussed harm of um derogatory language and um re-traumatization. And I went to a conference this summer that was youth-led and I was um reminded of who's in our schools right now. The children are present and Generation Z and Generation Alpha are in our schools right now. And they're probably the most diverse generation of our time, the most accepting generation of our time. And they really foster a culture of sense of belonging. And it is not popular in those generations to be shamed for who you are. And they would be most likely committed to disrespect anyone who would just shame them for their sense, for their identity. Um, and we've been talking about diversity as simply as lived experience. We all have a different lived experience. We all have our own form of trauma that we've experienced. And we all bring something into this space that we're in right now. Um, and that's why it's important for our educators to build community through relationships and have intentional conversations with those in that classroom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Dr. Stacks, superintendent's announcements are upstate.
Oh, thank you so much. Board members, the time is upon us. Um, the, let the bells ring that, um, no pun intended, uh, but let the school bells ring, I should say. And um we will be.
Ready for Christmas.
I know. Um, we welcomed all of our uh, uh, regular employees back uh on Monday. And they've been just hard at work. And I'll tell you, I've been making many, many different visits for different reasons at different schools and uh, we've had open house, middle school open house last night, high school is this evening. Is there an open house tomorrow night? Primary and media, I think. And um so um lots going on and I, I wanna encourage you to visit a school, visit a school if you can. Um, we are going to be having our back-to-school bash on Saturday at uh ten AM at the Roundhouse. Know what that is yet, but I will learn. I'm sorry?
It's fun.
You can't miss it.
Am I saying, is it the Roundhouse? Oh, is it the Roundhouse?
It was the railroad Roundhouse.
Oh, well, I know that. Yes, 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 I know that now. And we're gonna have a table uh with information and resources. I think we're gonna have a school bus there as well. So uh, so the kids can get on and they can, you know, get on the, get on the big cheese wagon and see what it's all, all about. So um wanna invite folks to come out for that. Also, um, I have provided um my uh draft goals to the board at the last meeting. I know I've gotten some feedback from Mr. Murphy and uh President Long. But if you all have any feedback for me, if you can, get those in to me as soon as possible, because they will, it will be on the next agenda on the nineteenth or.
Go for it. There's your, there's your feedback.
Okay, thank you. That's great. Um, also, Monday is the first day for our kiddos and we cannot wait to welcome them back to our school doors. Um, it's going to be a great school year and we really just can't wait to see our bright-eyed, bushy-tailed kiddos coming through our elementary and primaries, school doors, our middle school students, um, you know, who um uh are awesome as well, but um, you know, they uh, they're, they're, they come in as nervous Nellies and they are in eighth grade as the king, king of the world. And so we uh wanna wish them a great school year. And then of course, our high school students um, uh will be also back with us and we can't wait to welcome them and um the uh back to a great school year in high school. So as we think about the first day of school year, um, I have a, a little tradition as superintendent that I like to do, and that is that I like to invite my senior staff and board members to join me at, for our bus driver send-off, um, which will be Monday morning. Um, at six fifteen, we will have folks at the um primary uh bus garage, which is the South Berkeley uh site. Um, at six fifteen, we'll have Carla has signage that says, you know, sort of celebrations, good job. We love, you know, have a great year. We, we appreciate what you do because our bus drivers are the first people to see, are the first adults to see our kids uh many times at school and they're the last people to see them before they go home. And so they are, when you think about making sure that every single student has a, has a caring adult, um, I can tell you that our, our bus drivers are um the, the first relationship that our kids have. And so we really appreciate what they do and we wanna appreciate them by sending them off in style. So if you would like to join us at six fifteen, then we would invite you to be there at the South Berkeley site for the send-off. We do have two other sites that we're also gonna have some staff at, which is the North, is that right, the North?
The main um bus garage. And then Eric has also asked Berkeley Heights, I guess, if possibly about there as well.
Yep. So we'll have a few people there as well, just to make sure our, our larger sites are covered. Then we have our uh board meeting, which will be uh that same evening at six PM um over at, off the Queen Street Boardroom. Um, and so I look forward to seeing you all then. The agenda, I think, was, did we post it this afternoon already?
Two thirty-three o'clock.
So you, so you should have that. I, I don't anticipate a super long uh meeting with the agenda, um, you know, uh being the first day of school, but um you'll definitely have that. And I, I also will give you a quick update. I know that our self-help policy is out on uh public comment. I think so far we've had about fifteen public comments that we've, we've uh had. And so um just wanted to share that with you. And that concludes my superintendent's update.
Thank you. Uh, if there's no other, there's yet, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Or adjourned?